I'd like to call the board of the regular meeting in the Elwood City Area School Board. Roll call, Mr. Drum.
Mr. Bazelli.
Here.
Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Garda.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman.
Here.
Mr. Morella.
Here.
Mr. Newpower.
Here.
Mrs. Panzera.
Here.
Mr. Trolley.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson. Ms. Sesti. Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. DeCaro.
Here.
Could we stand for a moment of silence called by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust that all the board members have read the minutes from our previous month's meeting. Committee and regular, I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Mr. Cortez, second. Mr. Panzera. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Alright, we're gonna move on now to our student council rep, Ms. Sesti. Go ahead.
High tech, she's bringing it up.
Okay.
Alright, our first order of business for our previous meeting was we're to reelect a new treasurer because the former treasurer, James Taylor, has new school districts. So we took volunteers to run for the reelection and after the council votes, Laura Reese has been chosen to fill the spot. Also, we have given Selena Stammer the executive administrator position due to her contribution. A crucial catch has been going on. They're pink football signed by all of the senior football players, cheerleaders, band members, and the ones who've been signed by the junior class. They're painted pink and they're sold at each home game. The donations are taken for the Crystal Catch Foundation, raising money for the art program. Each ball has raised over a little $200, which is very good. And the last donation will be taken at the senior night football game against Fever October 14th. Our sale this year is a candy sale. It is the Daffens candy bars. Each senior as any council member has been received a box and the sale will take place until October 17th. This profit of $1,800 will be put into our account to fund the annual winter dance. The Macy's Lip Dub Contest is a contest we are entering. It's a lip dub. And we have had a dress rehearsal on Monday. Every club and activity was involved in this video. The cheerleaders are in their uniforms, the football players are in their jerseys and everything. The final shooting will be held October 17th. We're hoping to place in the top three because there's the cash prize for the top three places. Coming, this spirit week was a great turnout. It was one of the best turnouts I've seen in a long time. We ended it with Thursday, there was a bonfire and it was a great turnout. It was held September 25th at Seapool Park. Student council funded the DJ and the pizza. And I think it got a lot of attention and brought more students to the football game. Student council also has put together the visit from Erin McLealyn. She's a Democratic congressional candidate. She came to speak to the 11th and 12th grade on September 23rd. And then the last thing we have been trying to work out is the Morph Dance. There's not been a Morph Dance in the past four years. So we are trying to raise the interest, inconvenience. We are trying to plan for the end of October instead of April. Trying to get more interest for that.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in and informing us on everything that's going on in the school district. Okay, we'll move on now to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bazelli. Just a reminder that we do have a half day tomorrow for teacher in-service and teacher evaluations. That there's no school on Monday for Columbus Day. I'd like to talk about a meeting that the Lawrence County superintendents had at the Elwood Group, excuse me, the Elwood Group up in Newcastle with School to Work. They gave all of the superintendents the hundred-year history of the Elwood Group and the steel industry throughout their industry, the multinational corporation that they are. We'll put it in our high school library, but I thought I'd pass it around and you can take a look at it. Pam Vass from the Elwood Group and Paula McMillan from School to Work presented. There's a lot of interesting things about the Elwood Group. They're a very big partner in the School to Work. School to Work does a lot for school districts in the county with boot camp for school counselors. They do a lot of job fairs and career fairs, health career fairs. They're doing something for girls, Girls Engaging Mentors Program, Engineering Day and so on. So we're trying to get more involved with School to Work. What I'd like to do now is kind of talk about something that's gonna be coming up and it's always a big event here in Elwood City. My goal on Thursdays during board meetings is trying to get students in here and show what is happening in the district. And obviously, the musical is a big part of what we do. And I'd like to spotlight students and what's going on and the teachers that are working with them. And so I'm gonna kind of introduce Ms. Felicia Greco and Ms. Laura Adams, our choir teachers here at the high school, and kind of talk about some things that's happening with the musical and it's all you.
Good evening. Thanks to Mr. Mancini for inviting us tonight. We're really excited to be here. We're excited to put on the Rodgers and Hammerstein classic, The Sound of Music. It's been a long time since this show has been performed by high school students on this stage. And you have before us some of our very talented cast members. The show will be performed Friday through Sunday, November 14th through the 16th. We'll have two evening shows on Friday and Saturday at 7:30, two matinees on Saturday and Sunday at 2 o'clock. Tickets will be $10 for students and senior citizens and $12 for adults. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Von Trapp family singers and they'll let you know who they are and what characters they'll be playing.
I'm Joe Cortez, I'm a sophomore and I play Captain Von Trapp.
I'm Pegan Rysker, I'm in eighth grade and I play Kurt.
I'm Tara Marsh, I'm in eighth grade and I play Brigette Von Trapp.
I am Linda Minehauer, I'm in third grade and I play Martha.
I'm Sierra Pena, I'm in second grade and I play Gretel.
I'm Marina Thetford, I'm a senior and I play Maria.
I'm Amy Makeham, I'm in eighth grade and I play Lisa.
I'm Katie Tomah, I'm in ninth grade and I also play Lisel.
I'm Tyler Gudaw, I'm in ninth grade and I play Brigitte.
I'm Lori Rectamont, I'm in 12th grade and I play Lisel.
Now, we'd like to perform for you two numbers, Do Re Mi from the concert scene, and then we will leave you with So Long Farewell.
Do a deer, a female deer. Re, a drop of golden sun.
Me, a name I call myself.
Far, a long, long way to run.
During this interlude, the Von Trapp family is transitioning from their home to the concert hall where they will perform next season.
So, a needle pulling thread.
A needle pulling thread.
A note to follow song.
A note to follow song.
A drink with jam and bread.
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 Jam and bread.
Tea with jam and bread.
Tea with jam and bread.
Jam and bread, jam and bread. Tea with cham, jam and bread. Jam and bread, tea with cham, jam and bread.
With jam.
E B C.
With jam.
Do Re Mi. E B C T E F G. Do Re Mi Fa Sol La. Tea with jam and bread. With jam and bread. Fa Sol La. La La La. Tea with jam and bread. With cham and bread. With cham, with cham and bread. There's a sad sort of clanging from the clock in the hall and the bells in the Seapool too. And up in the nursery and a certain little bird is popping out to say, "Coo." Coo, coo. Coo, coo. Regretfully they tell us, but firmly they compel us to say goodbye to you. Farewell, I'll be there to say goodnight.
I hate to go and leaves a pretty sight.
So long farewell, I'll be there saying adieu.
Adieu, adieu to you and you and you.
So long farewell, or well, I'll be there saying.
I'd like to stay and taste my first champagne. No?
No.
So long farewell, I'll be there saying goodbye.
I'll leave and hear my sign say goodbye, goodbye.
I'm glad to go. I cannot tell a lie. I flit, I float, I flee, 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 I fly. The sun has gone. Cool and so must I. So long farewell, I'll be there saying goodbye.
Thank you for having us. And we'd like to give away some free tickets to the show, so we have a couple of trivia questions. So let's see. I'm gonna start at the heart. In what American city and state did the Von Trapp family settle when they came to America and they still live and own a ski resort? Still Vermont. Okay, we'll move on to another one. How about, how many original Von Trapp children were there in the family?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How many original Von Trapp children were there in the family when Maria came to be their governess? Anybody? Seven, yeah, seven. I heard you said it first. She's in the orchestra, so he might be excluded.
I can probably see.
You said it, okay. And one more. Who wrote the music to The Sound of Music? Rodgers and Hammerstein. Present that certificate. That's why she missed. That's right, if you were listening, you caught that. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Great job, thank you, great job. Thank you, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't wish to. You have my permission to leave.
Okay, we'll move on to our visitors portion of the meeting. If you state your name, we'll start up front here to my right. To your left, your name and the reason why you're here tonight, please.
Adrian Ness, a parent volunteer.
Beth Morella, just a visitor.
Mary Ann Morella, just a visitor.
Erica Gray, PTO parent.
Kathy McCommones, PTO. Robin Rogers, parent.
David Breimer, teacher.
David Quittinella, PTO.
Diana Lepner, visitor.
Tara Lombardo, teacher.
Garazanski, visitor.
Tracy Cortez, visitor.
Lori Colmeyer, visitor.
Robin Popovich, teacher.
Eric Poile, also a volunteer.
Thank you. We'll move on now to our business portion of the meeting. We'll go on to Revenue and Finance, Mr. Newpower.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vice under Revenue and Finance, number eight. General Fund Treasurers Report. In your folder is the amended General Fund Treasurers Report as of August 31, 2014. The summary of accounts is as follows. ESB Bank Checking, $2,596,542.99. PLGIT, $10,323.32. PA Invest, $378.60. ESB Public Investment, $6,232,426.27. And ESB Certificate of Deposit, $4,013,306.55. Total cash and investments at August 31, 2014, $12,854,362.84. Also in your folder is the interim General Fund Treasurers Report as of September 30, 2014. The summary of accounts is as follows. ESB Bank Checking, $140,178.28. PLGIT, $10,323.52. PSDLF, $1,385.14. PA Invest, $378.62. ESB Public Investment, $5,935,145.2. ESB Certificate of Deposit, $4,515,251.3. Total cash and investments at September 30, 2014, $10,602,661.61. I move the interim General Fund Treasurers Report for September 2014 to be approved as presented as well as the Treasurers Report for August 31, 2014.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number nine, General Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder are the General Fund Accounts Payable checks included or checks 107428 through 107703. 278 checks and 11 wire transfers amounting to $2,353,873.90. I move that the General Fund Accounts Payable checks be approved as presented.
Second.
Checking.
Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 10, Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report for September 2014. The total investments of September 30, 2014 were $89,925... I'm sorry, $89,925.27 with $5,188.57 for a total available balance of $95,113.84. I move the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report for September 2014 to be approved as presented.
Second.
Checking.
Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 11, Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder are the Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable checks included or checks 1432 through 1433. Two checks amounting to $43,566.8. I move that the Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable checks be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
I would ask that the following reports be included in the minutes of this evening's meeting. As of July 31, 2014, Statement of Revenue vs. Budget. Statement of Expense vs. Budget. Tax Collection Report. As of August 31, 2014, Statement of Revenue vs. Budget. Statement of Expense vs. Budget. Tax Collection Report. Cafeteria Report. And as of September 30, 2014, Investment Report. Investment Earnings. Athletic Facility Fund Report. Helling Stadium Century Club Report.
Could you say their part of the minutes, Mr. Drum?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Number 12, IDEA-B Flow Through Funds Agreement. In your folder is a copy of the Subgrant Contract for Implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Subchapter 2, between the Midwestern Intermediate Unit 4 and the District. The agreement outlines the responsibilities of each entity in managing and spending IDEA funds totaling $265,910. I move the agreement to be approved as presented.
Second. Second. Mr. Morella, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 13, IDEA Section 619 Flow Through Funds Agreement. In your folder is a copy of the Subgrant Contract for Implementation in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Section 619, between the Midwestern Intermediate Unit 4 and the District. The agreement outlines the responsibilities of each entity in managing and spending IDEA funds totaling $4,409 that are to be used to support kindergarten-eligible children. I move the agreement to be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 14, Procurement Card Policy for Review. The administration is recommending new policy number 625, procurement cards. I move the policy to be acknowledged, placed on display, incorporated into this evening's minutes, and submitted for board consideration at the November meeting.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all from Revenue and Finance, Mr. Drum.
Thank you, Mr. Newpower. Personnel Education, Mr. Garda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number 15, Edulink Dedham. In your folder is an addendum to a three-year agreement between the District and Edulink for SLO and principal non-teaching professional evaluation software a cost of $3,333. I move the addendum to be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Bazelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 16, Custodial Unattended Leave. I move that a six-month leave of absence be approved for Gerald Trudy under the terms and conditions of Article 9, Leave of Absence, Section 1, Physical Disability of Agreement between the District and the SEIU Local 32BJ.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions?
Did we have a parent back in there or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 17, Winter Coaches. In your folder is a list of winter sport coaches recommended by the athletic director. I move the list to be approved as presented.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions?
Question.
Mrs. Panzera.
What is the gymnastics?
She's a volunteer, I believe. I think she works for them off-season.
Someone outside, we don't provide gymnastics, we have to have a coach.
So it's outside the district?
Yeah, it's outside.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 18, Game Personnel. In your folder is a list of athletic game personnel rates for 2014-15 athletic gear. I move the rates to be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 19, Instructional Assistant. I move that Mrs. Kayla Zion, woman Kayla McKee, be hired as an instructional assistant for the Special Agent Department under the provisions of the collective bargaining between the District and SEIU.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newpower, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number 20, Resignation. Melissa Theodoro has submitted her resignation from the District effective immediately. I move the resignation to be accepted.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morella, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garda. Properties and Transportation, Mrs. Panzera.
Is it all right to group these students?
Sure.
Facility Request. A, the Elwood City Little Wolverines request permission to use Helling Stadium, including the bathroom facilities for the 2014 playoff game on Saturday, October 11, 2014. B, Lawrence County 4H, Wayne Bubaroos, request permission to use a pod area or a classroom at Hartman Intermediate School for the bimonthly 4H student club meetings, held from February to November 2015 on the first and last Mondays from 6 to 8 p.m. C, the Alumni Football USA, Mr. Robert Bishop is requesting the use of Helling Stadium for an alumni football game on Friday, November 7, 2014 from 4 to 10 p.m. D, Mrs. Betty Bany Deloya, Chairman of the Elwood City Parade Committee, is requesting use of the Lincoln High School parking lot for the annual Halloween and Christmas parades from 1:30 to 4 o'clock on Saturday, October 25th and Saturday, December 3, 2014. E, the fifth and sixth grade girls' basketball team requests permission to use the Hartman Intermediate School gym on Tuesdays and Thursdays evenings beginning October 25, 2014 through the season from 4:30 till 9 o'clock. F, WEF Wrestling requests permission to use the hall outside of the multipurpose room at Hartman Intermediate School for wrestling registration Tuesday, October 21st and Tuesday, November 4th, 2014 from 6:30 to 8 o'clock p.m. G, Rec Wrestling Youth Wrestling requests permission to use the Lincoln High School Boys Gym, the Lincoln High School Cafeteria and Kitchen on Saturday, February 21st, 2014 from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. with an alternate date of February 14th, 2015 for a wrestling tournament. I move that the facility request be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Trolley?
Questions.
Questions. Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Cortez?
See, is that been cleared with Mr. Schuster?
Yeah, for yourself. Mrs. Grossman?
I was just wondering, when rec wrestling and different things come in, do they need their clearances or anything like that, or is it just a club requesting facility use, that's it? Or are we responsible for any of any volunteers having? Or are we responsible for any of any volunteers having?
It's not our, it's not our group, we're just letting them use the facility.
That's a club, more or less like a club, outside club.
Outside club, correct. We're not responsible for the adults involved.
All right.
Any other questions? Yeah, another one. Morella?
Um, just for clarification, letter G, the alternate date, February fourteenth, I'm pretty sure I should be two thousand fourteen.
Yep, yes.
Two thousand fourteen. Why would it be two thousand?
Fifteen, fifteen, yeah, everywhere.
They both should be fifteen.
Yeah, they both should be fifteen.
Something was wrong with it.
Yeah, something wasn't.
Yeah.
From February to February.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motions? Motion passes.
Lincoln High School Masonry Routine Repairs. In your folders, Change Order G three, showing the Zero Change Cost Change Order that reflects miscellaneous credits for funds not used, balanced against additional work that was done, as issues were discovered during the construction process. I move that the change order be accepted as presented.
Second. Mr. Newparr, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does that have to do with Alex restoration?
Yeah, it would be part of the Alex restoration. It's actually far as construction analysis.
Yes, I know.
Any other questions? We'll go through this again. Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Transportation Costs. A, in your folders, a summary of the estimated transportation costs with the Elwood City Transit for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I move the cost in contract be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Grossman, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
In your folder is transportation contract with Heather Matheny for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I move that the contract be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morella, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Panzera. Student Affairs and Athletics, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-four, Field Trips. Mr. Rob Brown, Mrs. Pat Buckleton, sponsors, have requested that the Lincoln High School History Club students be permitted to travel to Washington, D. C., to visit various historical sites, from Saturday, May sixteenth, to May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. All costs will be the responsibility of the approximately forty-eight students attending. The estimated departure time is seven A. M. on May sixteenth, estimated return time, seven P. M. on May nineteenth. I move the field trip be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Twenty-five, Social Event. Miss Felicia Greco, Lincoln High School Core Director, has requested that students in Concert Core be permitted to travel to New York City by coach bus from Thursday, March fifth, two thousand fifteen, to Saturday, March seventh, two thousand fifteen, to see two Broadway musicals, visit Ground Zero, and travel to other sites in the area. All costs will be the responsibility of the approximately fifteen to twenty students attending. I move the social event be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morella, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Twenty-six, Bus Drivers. In your folder is a list of monitor van drivers submitted by the Elwood City Transit for the remainder of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. I may move the list be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Twenty-seven, New Club Proposal. I move that the Health Leaders of Tomorrow Club be established and sponsored by Mrs. Lisa Lynn Boer at Zero Units.
Second, Mr. Newparr, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Twenty-eight, Athletic Fund Detail Expenditure Report. In your folder is the Athletic Fund Detail Expenditure Report. It reflects total expenditures of fifteen thousand, eight hundred five dollars, fifty-one cents, the month of September, two thousand fourteen. I move the Athletic Fund Detail Expenditure Report be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newparr, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Twenty-nine, Activities Fund Quarterly Report. In your folder is the Activity Fund Quarterly Report as of September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. It reflects a balance of sixty-four thousand, forty-six dollars, sixty-one cents. I move the Activity Fund Quarterly Report be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Grossman, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President, on the Student Affairs and Athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Recognition and Communications, Mrs. Grossman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mrs. Gibson and the Northside staff would like to acknowledge Mrs. Bowman for her outstanding effort creating and preparing for the Northside Veterans Day Celebration. As in the past, Mrs. Bowman has invited all veterans to participate in the special ceremonial assembly, which included a patriot sing-along, the honoring of our service members, and a brief sharing from the spokesperson of the Elwood City American Legion. Every Northside family will be given the opportunity to share the name, rank, and branch of service of their special heroes. In addition, Northside will be collecting personal care items, such as shampoo, shower gel, deodorant for the veteran, and patient population at the Butler V. A. Hospital. Each home room will design two questions for a service member to answer. Students will be presenting our service members with a student-signed certificate of appreciation during the program. Also, special thanks to Julia Mutmansky for teaching the songs performed by our students, and Dee Rucker for her chalk talk closing activity. Our Veterans Day Celebration has become a big favorite at Northside Primary Center. Thanks, Mrs. Bowman, for your leadership and this important celebration. She has shown a very high level of professionalism in engaging our families in this school and community initiatives. This is from the desk of Frank Keely. Hayden Slate is a fourth-grade student at Perry. He competed in the onset competition at Slippery Rock University. This competition is intended for fifth and sixth-grade students from Lawrence, Mercer, Crawford, and Clarion Counties. Hayden was undefeated in the three rounds of fierce competition, and he earned the highest possible, possible scores in the game. Congratulations to Hayden on his most impressive accomplishment. What's an onset competition?
It's an academic game.
Uh, a little square.
That's about it.
Yeah, it's a strategy. It's a strategy. Wow, I'm defeated. Congratulations and thank you to Mrs. Debbie Wish and Mrs. Ashley Bigliotti. The elementary school counselors placed a new trail last week by initiating Career Day at Hartman and Perry. The students heard information from nineteen community members regarding their careers. The information was valuable to our students, informing them as to what they can do when they grow up. In addition, a special thanks to the community members who volunteered their time for this worthwhile endeavor. A special thanks to you, the E. C. E. P. T. O., for their continued support of our schools. Just this month alone, the P. T. O. has, A, donated five thousand dollars to Hartman towards the purchase of Chromebooks at Hartman, B, donated lunch for the, um, mentioned Career Day, and C, provided freshmen, refreshments at Open House. This is really nice. Um, this is from Principal Kirk Lake. Recently, Lee Cogwell, Lincoln High Blue Band Director, was recognized in Profiles Magazine. On page forty-one, there was a paragraph illustrating Lee's personal interests and his involvement in the Elwood City area's school district and community. A copy of the publication is included for your review. The administration thanks Lee for his continued efforts and with the students in the Elwood City School District. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Grossman. I move on to new business. Do we have any new business tonight? I had one question before we, um, is everything still a-go for that veterans program?
Yes, Mr. Lake's working on the details with the company and the pressure on it and stuff. I think Mr. Poole's been, asked Mr. Lake about it, so I think we'll get it all coordinated over the next month.
Okay. Did you get the time?
I did not.
No, but we're, we're all working on it.
Okay. You have the time, it starts?
I think the, um, I think it's gonna be in the afternoon, because the, they're gonna continue with the seventh and eighth grade one at eleven, and this one will be, I think, like around one o'clock. So, don't quote me on the exact time, but they're gonna do the seventh and eighth grade one in the morning, and then this one's gonna be for juniors and seniors, so.
We'll get the time, we'll let you know.
Yeah, we'll get it all coordinated, and we'll get that information out to everybody in the community. Thanks. Ms. Jerron?
Well, I'm wondering if we're going to go ahead with doing a feasibility study, if we can get some prices maybe, so that we can consider it, if we have room in the budget. We've kind of left it there on Monday, and I wasn't sure where the board wants to continue, or at least get some prices so that we know what we're looking at, call a couple forms.
Anybody have any comments on this?
Maybe the administration can give a little more information on it.
Sure.
For next month, if we actually have to approve it.
Right, just find out what we're looking at, the price was.
I think we wanna find.
Have it ready for our next committee meeting.
We wanna go into.
All right. Go ahead. A lot like for our next committee meeting.
Right, because the next, Mr. Jerome starts one, like the next budget's starting, what, the end of December, in the January. At least we know what kind of money we're looking at, and the study's gonna process.
Okay. Any other new business? No other new business, we'll go back to our visitors. Uh, we wanna start the same way across, if you have any questions for us. Anybody?
I have a question.
One in the back. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, I just, um, Monday's meeting, I wondered if you gave any more thought to matching the P. T. O.'s donation of the Chromebooks for Hartman, so that the fifth-grade pod could have a set to use as well as the sixth grade, so they wouldn't have to go up and down, up and down, for the kids.
What's the dollar amount on the Chromebook?
One seventy-nine. But I think if you go through a, Mr. Keely has better details than I do, but I think the price can be up or down, depending on who you go through.
I think there's a thirty-dollar license fee for each one also. So it'd be one seventy-nine plus a thirty-dollar, so.
What about carts? Do they need the carts too?
The carts would.
Hundred dollars for a cart.
Yeah, the carts would be essential, I think.
Couple hundred dollars for a cart.
And they all fit on a cart?
Like there are slots for thirty, right. So, I don't know the exact prices of them, but those are vital to the whole process too, so they.
It's about two ten.
Where can we find some money for that, Mr. Jerome?
Actually, we've had that discussion already, Mr. Newparr, and I guess because, and Mr. Nantini could probably speak to it better, but I think, I know we did a pilot reading program, and I believe we got a bunch of stuff free from Broad Hill.
And Pearson.
And Pearson, so there's money in the reading budget that is unused, that we could use if we were to sell clients buy Chromebooks.
How much are the carts?
Three, yeah, three hundred, four hundred, I don't know if, I'm gonna say, 'cause they're wired and they're all, they're all compact, and I know they're two, three hundred dollars at least. They're pretty sturdy.
Yeah, you're looking at two hundred and ten dollars a Chromebook times thirty, sixty-three hundred. So if you're adding on another four hundred dollars for, um, for about seven thousand, and that's not counting, we have to supplement whatever from the P. T. O.'s, they're gonna, they're giving us five thousand, that's not gonna purchase thirty, that's gonna, or we're gonna have to supplement to get to the seven there too.
My business will donate a cart, how about that?
Thank you.
Giving from Mrs.
That is very generous, very generous.
I'm gonna go with that, if there's money in the budget that's, that's.
Yeah, the money's, the fresh money in there, Mr. Jerome, maybe you ought to take care of that.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah, we'll have to write a motion up there.
I'll make a motion that we invest in thirty new Chromebooks for.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cortez, do we have any questions or discussion on this?
Do we have a cart for the P. T. O. donated Chromebooks?
I don't know, I'm not sure I can find that out for you.
Well, how can we include that in the motion?
Include it in the motion. That would be wonderful, if we included it in the motion.
Cart in your motion?
There's another cart, it's meeting.
I meant the motion to include a cart for Chromebooks.
I'll have a second.
We'll second that motion.
Mr. Cortez, are there any other questions on this motion? The motion passes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
We have anything else under new business, or visitors, we're all good?
Nope.
One more? Okay, go ahead.
Just to revisit the P. I. A. hearing from Monday, what was printed in the paper was contradictory. Mr. DeCaro's statement saying that Mr. Bazelli was asked to testify, and we left the meeting Monday with the impression that that was incorrect, and you had nothing to do with it, so I would just like clarification on that. I mean, we're putting our tax dollars in your hands, we're putting our students' future in your hands, we need to trust you. And contradictory statements does not lead to trust.
Well, um, in, as far as the, as far as the article in the newspaper went, I hope not, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Um, I was, I was confused after that meeting, as many, as many residents must have been, and so the next day I, I called Mr., I called Mr. DeCaro, and he clarified things for me, and that's why the article that appeared in the paper Wednesday appeared not to say the same thing that came out during the school board meeting on Monday.
Right, I mean, Mr. DeCaro, his statement led to believe that you were involved in this hearing. When Monday you said you weren't, that's a clerical error, you were not there on behalf of the Aloys, when in the paper it states, Aloys attorney is Ash Jue. So I, I just want clarification there.
I think Monday, the comment was he's there on behalf of Lincoln Park.
Well, aren't the Aloys with Lincoln Park? Isn't that the same side?
They're separate parties in the case. They may want the same result, but they're separate parties.
Okay, so they want the same result, but not the result that our school district wants, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
They would both be opposed.
So a member of our school board is going against our school district, right?
I'll let Mr. Bazelli.
I mean, I just want clarification on this, this is so confusing, we're not getting straight answers.
And he can.
I went over this Monday night when we had our committee meeting. I was there to clear up a statement that was made falsely with my name involved, that's the reason why I went there, and that's the reason, that's my reason for being there, and I never got the chance to clear that up, because they didn't ask for my testimony. I wasn't there in no way, shape, or form to represent Lincoln Park, I'm still a representative of Elwood City, and I always will be a representative of Elwood City, I won't go against the district.
Okay, it was just confusing, 'cause Mr. Morella read that you were the number four witness for Lincoln Park, so that's all, it's just very, very confusing, I.
I, I think that.
I mean, there's.
I'm not sure if that paper had him listed under Lincoln Park, as I told Mr. Poole, if it did.
It did, he read, Mr. Morella read it clearly, I, he clearly read it.
And he wasn't there on behalf of Lincoln Park. That, that's what I was trying to clarify from Mr. Poole, nor did he testify.
I'm not saying he testified, but he must have been with Lincoln Park for them to assume he's testifying on their react, no?
No, that's, he, he wasn't there for Lincoln Park, I was there. That's not how it was presented.
He was not there to represent Lincoln Park, and he was not there to represent Elwood City, so if you want to read between the lines as to what party he was with.
How is it a clerical error? What do you mean by clerical error?
Somebody for the P. I. A. A. put together a list of people in attendance, so they, and I don't have it in front of me to review it yet, but if they listed him under Lincoln Park, it was, the P. I. A. A. made a mistake by doing that.
He was there to testify, but he was, the clerical error was that he was under Lincoln Park and not an independent for.
Right, correct.
Lincoln Park and not an independent for Mr. Aloy.
Correct, because I, nobody said, Lincoln, or I'm sorry, PIAA put that sheet together. In fact, Mr. Lake and I weren't even on it, we were there obviously, but we weren't even on the sheet, so.
Okay, so back to, is he going to expense this trip? I mean, how did he get there? Did you drive by yourself? Did you ride with someone? I mean, are you gonna expense this through the district since you weren't there?
No, no.
We don't get, we don't really get expenses.
Nor pay.
Any other questions? There's no other questions, any motion to adjourn the meeting? Mrs. Panzera, second.
Second.
Mr. Newparr, any adjournments? Thank you for coming tonight.
Did you come up and tell you? Was that through? Was that the first thing out of his mouth?
I don't have any math.
That was yesterday, damn, no math homework. Oh, yes, have a good night, right here.